I'll call the Order Committee to hold for Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Left the record, children, all other than our president, with the exception of Alderman Panis, who is excused. First on our agenda, we have PL eighty-eight dash twenty-three by Alderman Crawford, to amend the City of Ole'An Code of Ordinances, Section twenty-four dash one thirty-four, parking prohibited at all times to include the west side of South Eighth Street. It says for the entire length of the street. So I asked Tiffany to put this on the agenda. We can't, if it votes out of Committee, it'll hold tonight, it will get published and so on. So I wanted to just clarify, two-thirds of South Eighth Street are already no parking on one side. So what I've asked, received request is to have the three hundred block have no parking on one side as well. So the one hundred and two hundred block have staggered west and west, no parking, and then two hundred block, I think, is east, no parking. So I would ask for the west side of the three hundred block of South Eighth Street to also have no parking one side. So I'm going to, I will make a motion to amend this. So it says to include the west side of South Eighth Street, so to omit for the entire length of the street, and just say the three hundred block. And I think we can keep the rest of that. Could I get a second on that, please? Second by Alderman Benyon, all in favor? Aye opposed. Okay, so we're omitting for the entire length of the street, and it's just the three hundred block. So it's west side of South Eighth Street, three hundred block, again. The first two blocks already had no parking one side on it. This is just doing it for the third block. Any comments or questions? Alderwoman McCall.
So was there a complaint or a rationale for that?
There was. Yes, I received complaints from my constituents, and I went down there. There are a lot of driveways, but there's also a lot of people not using their driveways and parking in the road, and it's a dead end. So the three hundred block of Northeast Street is a dead end, so it's tight as it is. And seeing no parking on the first two blocks, I thought that this was the easiest fix, and the constituents agreed, so. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, I'll make a motion. Could I get a second? Second by Alderman Forney, all in favor? Aye opposed. Motion carried, and that will be referred to the regular meeting Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, for resolution, and publication on that is required. PL twenty, PL eighty-nine dash twenty-three by Mayor Elio, to support the Ole'An Community Theater Incorporated, application for an exemption for real property taxes pursuant to Section four twenty A, the real property tax law for the two thousand twenty-two general tax year, and the two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two school tax year assessment rules. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. The, excuse me, the Senator and the Assemblyman's office would like us to pass this resolution, and we have no objection to the one-house bill being introduced, so that the exemption can go through.
Okay, so this is the same thing that we've worked on for a while now, so they're ready for it, but they just need this resolution?
They just want to make sure that the common council, there's no objection to this, and they'd like that in the form of a resolution, so they can pass it out.
Okay. So the new aldermen that are here, I think this predates you. The Ole'An Community Theater, when, I believe they were transitioning between locations to their new location, some of their paperwork got sent, I believe, perhaps to the wrong theater in town. They never filed their tax exemption forms. They're not for profit, obviously, in our community, and I know Jason was involved, myself, the mayor, trying to come up with the best solution for this, and the mayor worked with Senator Morello's office and Assemblyman Giglios to do what's called the one-house bill, where they get the authorization from the state to go backwards in time and give them tax exemption. Is that right, Mayor?
Yes, and then once this goes through, it will authorize us to refund the tax money.
Okay, so, yes, Alderman Robinson.
I just wanted to clarify, because I heard exemption. So this will exempt them completely from paying city tax and school tax? Or is this just city tax and discount on the school tax, or?
No, they're not for profit. So they're not for profit, the same way that any other not-for-profit is exempt from paying property taxes. The only difference was, they, because of mixed up, they failed to turn in the forms in the timeframe, and so they got hit with a tax bill from the school accounting in the city for around five thousand dollars total, give or take, and they came to us asking for a reprieve, and the mayor offered the one, the solution is to go through the Assemblyman and Senator Morello's office.
Do we know by chance what the break is for both? That the city would be losing?
I think the city's, it's like twelve hundred dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
I can look into that in an email tomorrow.
We're voting tonight. Exemptions for the next year as current year. They just failed to file their exemption, so back in twenty-one, twenty-two. So we've been going back and forth on whether when they finally, they finally get around to reaching out to the Senator and the Assemblyman's office about one, they call it a one-house bill. There's several of these, these are for organizations that don't file the tax exemption, and they want to recover the tax.
So the taxes paid, if this passes, that we, their issue filed that?
That's correct.
And the reason the resolution, there again, is because the Senator's office and the Assemblyman's office asked us to do a resolution, so that they know that the common council is, does not object to this.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Any motions? I'll make a motion to approve this. Could I get a second? Second by Alderman McCall, all in favor? Aye opposed. Motion carried, and is referred to tonight's regular meeting for resolutions. Make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Robinson, all in favor? Aye opposed. Motion carried. I'll call to order the regular meeting, the common council, for Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. For the clerk, please call the attendance hall.
Councilman Benyon?
Here.
Councilman Panis?
Councilwoman Forney?
Here.
Councilwoman McCall?
Here.
Councilman Robinson?
Here.
Councilman Anastasia?
Here.
And President Crawford?
Here. Please rise with the invocation and the pledge. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. In your name we pray.
Amen. Welcome to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. We'll be having public comment in just a couple minutes, if that's what you're...
We were here for Ole'An Community Theater.
Oh, okay.
So as long, I just wanted to make sure that I heard correctly. We owe just over five thousand dollars for city taxes.
So we will be voting on that again here shortly. It's got to pass, it's got to go through twice, so.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't know if you were here for a public comment, or, so now we're in regular meeting, it has to pass a second time, just to let you know, okay? Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Read the correcting and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
The regular meeting of the Ole'An Common Council was held on Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, at six fifteen PM. Present were Alderman Crawford, Benyon, Forney, McCall, Robinson, and Anastasia. Alderman Panis was absent.
Could I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Motion made by Alderman Benyon. Could I get a second, please? Second by Alderman Forney, all in favor? Aye opposed. Motion carried. Committee reports on unfinished council business?
None.
Communications for the mayor?
Thank you. Excuse me. I have several retirements here and resignations. Effective December third, Mark Donio will be retiring as the garage shop supervisor after twenty-seven point five years with the city. So that's fair. I have Mark Ayers, who has worked for the city for several years, doesn't have a resignation here, but he will be retiring as of December eighth, two thousand twenty-three. I have Andrea Serno, he's been with us a short time, is a car's maintainer. He is going to be resigning as of December sixteen, two thousand twenty-three. He has decided to go back to school, and he'll be going to Bunnys and studying history. I have Roger Howard of the Ole'An Fire Department, and he will be, his retirement will be effective January fifth, two thousand twenty, this is two thousand twenty-five, it's two thousand twenty-four. After twenty-three and a half years with the Ole'An Fire Department. And I have Linda Huff. Linda will be retiring after thirty-seven years service with the city, and that will be effective January twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. So we wish them all good luck in retirement, and whenever they're moving on too. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Miss Alene, communications?
Application for an adult-use retail dispensary license, Bud Brothers L.S.L.C., thirteen fifteen East State Street, Ole'An.
City official reports?
Monthly report with the city auditor, month ended October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Financial summer report as of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Proposed legislation and referrals?
PL number eighty-eight dash twenty-three by President Crawford, referred to Committee of the whole Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, by council president. PL number eighty-nine dash twenty-three by Mayor Elio, referred to Committee of the whole Tuesday, November fourteenth, by council president.
Okay, before I open it up to public comment, I've given opportunity to any alderman at this time, may I state? Alderwoman McCall?
So I met with the residents on North Second that are interested in really moving on kind of a neighborhood watch, and at some point, I think they'll look to involve other neighborhoods, so if anyone's interested, they can, they can send me their information. One of the things they said is, and I didn't look myself, that the covers for the fire pits are on, and so they're wondering, will it be functional for the Santa Claus Wayne Parade? So Mayor, I don't know if you know if the fire pits will be, because the covers, my understanding, are on there?
Yeah, yeah. It will be tested tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, we'll be testing them, and our plan is, yes, they'll be functional, and as soon as we test them out, we'll get them going.
Perfect. And then the other thing I wanted to remind people is, if you haven't done the comprehensive plan survey, to please get that in. I did ask, does anyone know when that window closes? Because somebody had asked.
We had all this, the end of December.
The end of what?
December.
Okay, so I'll put that out, because they asked, okay. And I guess lastly, I'm still looking to see, we were going to get a report out on the, how the seventy thousand dollars for the extra edges were being paid for, so I'm just looking to see if we can maybe, if they're not ready next week, get a report on that, and then also, the, I guess we have the money set aside for the five trucks, but there is three additional ones that we didn't have the funding for, just to, if we can be a little proactive with those last three, as to how we're going to fund those, but also then that twenty thousand, because I did see one of the Ford edges out there, nice-looking sleep vehicles, so just trying to figure out how that seventy thousand, I know we talked about it, maybe a fifty-fifty split, but just to finalize that.
Mayor, do you think we could get that on the agenda for next week, or committees?
I think we can, yeah. It's reasonable.
Anything else? All right, will the clerk, please read the public comment statement?
The public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
All right, at this time, I will invite any members of the public to first to vote. Say your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes. Anyone? Anyone, anyone at all? Okay. At this time, I'll call public comment closed, on the financing builds.
The big, none.
Resolutions?
Resolution number eighty-seven dash twenty-three, PL number eighty-nine dash twenty-three, out of committee by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman McCall, to support Ole'An Community Theater Incorporated, application for exemption from real property taxes pursuant to Section four two zero dash A of the real property tax law for the two thousand twenty-two general tax year, and the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school tax year assessment rules.
Okay, so we just had a conversation about this, got some more information, so just the city taxes that are owed are just to around five thousand dollars. And also, the Calargis County approved this quite a while ago, maybe a year or two ago at this point. So I think it just, it ultimately comes to us now, and again, this is just a process in which we approve on our end, and then New York State does their thing to do it motion retroactively, so. Any other comments or questions before we vote? Alderman Robinson?
I just want to add, you know, I'm for the Ole'An Community Theater and what they do. Anything that provides arts, theater, things like that, especially to our community, are great. But I have a huge, huge issue with not-for-profit in our city, because it seems like every corner you go to is a not-for-profit, every pop-up that seems to go around, and a lot of them are on intersections, which take up a larger chunk of the city taxes. So for me, like I said, and I know I was for this before, and I'm going to stand by it, but for me, when, when these, when not-for-profits come, it's like we're eating up properties and leaving the balance for everyone else to pay. To me, that's basically what's going on, and I think at some point, there needs to be a remedy or cutoff or something to what we're doing and what we're allowing in the city. Who's paying the taxes? We are. That's it. And we're, when our population is going down, and then is divided up amongst those that are still here. Meanwhile, not-for-profit comes in, and granted, a lot of them, majority of them, have great benefit to the community, that doesn't help our bottom line, period. So I just wanted to share that.
Anything else? Alderman Benyon?
I'm just going to kind of go with Vernon, because there's, I think, a couple of developments that are going on now that are getting both months paid. Property tax parcel's off, so that's nothing against the theater, same as him, just the greater hole, and the conversation needs to be had sometime soon, and see what we can come up with.
Yeah, I understand where you're both coming from, and this is, this is a concern, I mean, it's a concern that goes beyond probably even the control of the Ole'An Common Council. We see payment in lieu of taxes that occur on multi-million-dollar, you know, structures. The alternative is, is it better to have properties sit vacant, and empty, and dying? And so, you know, and I also think that it has to be put into context. There are not-for-profits that are true not-for-profits, that they don't make any money, and then there are not-for-profits that are huge property owners in the city of Ole'An that pay their executives and administrators a million dollars a year plus, okay, but they can't afford to pay taxes. So, you know, I guess I pick and choose the Ole'An Community Theater that, you know, just for context's sake, took a defunct church over there and just put some new life into it. You know, they're doing it out of, effectively, the goodness of their hearts, because they love it, okay? No one over there is making, getting paid at all. I get where we're supposed to support and help and work with not-for-profits in our local community that are true not-for-profits, versus others that use the not-for-profit status, but don't have a problem paying six figures and seven figures to their top staff. So it is what it is, and I think it's a bigger, a bigger issue beyond the Ole'An City Council. Mr. Mayor?
If I may, one thing here is that the property was off the tax rolls because it wasn't synagonic, and so it's, it's not like another property's being added. And then as for some of these larger developments that are going on, we do have pilots with them, which will be very close, if not equivalent, to what the city tax would be. So those things we work on as we do those with them, so.
And are those pilots, are those annual pilots, though?
Yes, yeah. It'll have, I'm sorry, it'll have a range, it'll be for this number of years, and then it can be renegotiated.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yeah, Ken, I was just going to agree with what Vernon said, but I'm not going to flip-flop on this topic, because I think a year or two ago, this was probably, again, devoted to way through taxes, so, but I was just going to say that, the mayor already beat me to it, I thought that property was already the tax exemption before the Community Theater. And I, that part, I forgot about, so that's probably why I was for it the first time. That's all I have, yeah.
All right, we're good. Anything else? Seeing none, will the clerk, please call the...
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis is absent? Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes, six ayes, no ayes. Resolution number eighty-eight dash twenty-three, PL, no PL, to override the mayor's disapproval of a curb cut approval located at eleven oh eight Irving Street, following an appeal to the common council, and to authorize a curb cut at eleven oh eight Irving Street to remain in place.
Okay, so I apologize, I wasn't here last time that we, I think this came up, I was sick last week, so this has been talked about, we've received some feedback from our city attorney, so at this point, if we move forward, and just where the votes fall, votes fall, so any comments or questions? Alderman Benyon?
Yeah, I spoke with Bill in his office about this, just briefly, one of the things that was written in the letter of disapproval, Mayor O'Malley, so just correct me, was a statement made about like the city's involvement with the process, I believe is what it kind of read, too. And I explained to Bill, in my opinion, the city had involvement, and to go back on this, the DPW issued an order to remediate, correct, Robert, an order to remediate, it's dated first September-ish, and then, then the application for a curb cut came out after that fact, and brought, and it was denied, opened a public comment, then brought it here. We talked about the right-of-way stuff, number one, the people never cut her, so curb to cut. The issue is, is that there's concrete on subway. I don't believe there's any code decisions you can have concrete on subway. Recently, another permit was issued in the city over by Ninth Street for putting a sidewalk perpendicular to the city sidewalk crossing the subway. Stated in my opinion that when you're working the right-of-way, it's your property, I don't understand the premises of the rent, but that's, that's kind of the crux of, the city was involved. DPW director got the application, denied it, spoke at the appeals process, the mayor was present, so I can't say that the city didn't have involvement. Secondly, the bigger issue than the question was the fact that it's not a legislation, it's not an act, there's an appeals process, I stated that same thing with the tree board, if you disagree, you can have an appeal to the tree board. Can't veto that, the mayor's a city member of it. Sometimes there's things that are defined by that, like if there's a codes hearing that goes to the fire chief for his or her design, so those are not things that can be overwritten. In this case, it's just a defined thing. I have an issue with us saying, well, let's just let the chips fall where they fall, if, then we're just going to set up and say, well, we did that way before, it's not right, we shouldn't do it. I wish Jack was here, as the charter defines him as the city parliamentarian, that would have been good to maybe have some back and forth, we did receive the email, but that's, that's my statement, and now, now you have Alderman Panis, who's not even here, and now you do, you know, I don't know where you're going, where you're going to get to on this drawn-out process, so that's, so I do have an issue with moving forward with that.
Yeah, Alderman Anastasia?
Yeah, I agree with everything J.R. just said. I was trying to find the email, and I didn't delete it, but apparently somebody considered to reject Jack's email from my, from my emails, because I was going to try to refresh my memory on what Jack had said, but I don't know where that email is. But anyways, J.R. touched on it. The city did have participation, Robert was here when we appealed it, he said he didn't apparently have a problem either way, how we voted. So, and the mayor was here, too, so if the mayor had a problem on that night when we were discussing the appeal, the mayor should have said something to that. It's not a resolution, it's not a PL, it's an appeal, I don't think the authority rests with the mayor to veto this. I agree with J.R., Jack Hart should be here to explain, maybe Jack didn't meld in the process who was here and what took place and how it happened. Jason is not here tonight, I think we should postpone this for two weeks, and have Jack Hart here, and have the full council here, so get the full council to vote on this. So I think I have a motion to postpone.
Okay, so a motion's been, a motion's been made, it has not been seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay, it is seconded. So before we take a vote on that motion, I, it's been postponed this long, I don't know if, under the charter, being a, being a vote to override a mayor's disapproval, if we can postpone this. If our city attorney was here, I could ask him, but I don't know. Mayor, do you have any thoughts on that?
Tiffany, it's...
From the parliament's viewpoint, once a motion's been made and seconded, a vote has to happen before any further discussion.
Okay, well, we're just, I still want clarification, whether or not we have an ability to even make that motion.
We had, I just said, when, it was said, if any time the council wants Jack here, let me know, and you will have him here. So I was not asked to have Jack here tonight, so in the future, if you request Jack to be here, you will have him here. Like I said, the first time around, when this got put off, I don't have an issue with that, I think it's just a matter of getting it right, so I'm not going to make it an issue, I don't know if that's clear or not, but if you want to put it off, you know, for, I mean, it's, it's there, so I'm glad it comes down to, are we going to have it removed or not?
So specifically, it's being, that the motion to postpone for two weeks is to get further clarification from... is to get further clarification from, from Jack Hart, is that, is that what this?
I'm ready.
Is this, is that what you're looking for?
Request, yeah, I guess we're gonna, well, the request is presence to, as the charter defines the city parliamentarian, you know, request his presence.
Okay. Okay, so seconded, uh, any further debate? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, motion carried and, uh, this is then postponed for two weeks. Anything further? Um, so, uh, I would like to make a motion tonight, uh, to adjourn in memory of Police Chief, uh, Mike, Mike Moody, um, just an incredible individual, um, certainly a part of the, the greatest generation and just a class act all around. Mr. Mayor, anything?
Yeah, he was, uh, was chief police for twenty-five years, uh, he's the chief that hired me back in nineteen seventy-four and in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety, he was the confidence in me to take over the general office, so, uh, he was just a wonderful person, a great chief, as a lot of guys still say, he was the real chief, so, and he, he loved the good life, ninety-five.
Yep, and, uh, I didn't see him too long ago and anytime he'd see me, uh, he'd say, "How you doing, young fella?" And, uh, just a really class act, just a really good guy, so. Uh, all right, could I go second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman McCall, all in favor? I oppose, motion carried, we are adjourned.